First of all, we'd like to welcome all of you here for this fun evening for us. I mean, we really appreciate all of you coming. We're embarrassed by the recognition because we enjoy serving our children and our parents in the community. We've all done it for many, many years, but it's nice to be recognized. We're really glad you're here and glad it's nice weather. But before we start, we would really like to welcome one of our board members back, Greg Scott, who had a kidney removed before Christmas. And he is sitting here with our board meeting tonight, and we're very glad you're here. Next, two of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 16th. A motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Green.
Look, my sweat.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lafitte.
Welcome tonight. This is...January is school board appreciation month. We started a few years ago just to try to provide some sort of appreciation to people up there. Whether you know it or not, this is not their full-time job. Most of these people are all either retired or working full-time. They just do this because they enjoy young people. So what we're gonna do is, seven different schools have volunteered to say a little thank you in some fashion to the people up here. So what we'll do is, we'll calm down, one at a time, and we're gonna go with...and I say this every year, we go with the secondary people first because you can't compete with cutesy. And so when we get to the elementary, it gets a little rougher. So I'd ask Mr. Hedmark and the high school if they could come up, and Mr. Swit...Mr. Switnowski, if you could come on down.
I'm Pete Hedmark. I'm the principal from Roseville High School. And I'm just gonna turn it over to a couple of our seniors, Alicia and Reba. If you ladies would come on up. Introduce yourselves and we'll go.
Good evening. We are Reba Stanley.
And Alicia Devers.
And we're from Roseville High School. We are here this evening as representatives to honor board members, Mr. Switnowski, for school board appreciation.
We gave a lot of thought as to how to best recognize Mr. Switnowski's support for Roseville students. We decided to present him with a number of gifts created from our many talented hands.
Cookies from LB's.
Nice.
Nice.
From the vocational program, a live, laugh, love sweatshirt.
Live, laugh, love. Beautiful.
From the woodshop, a hat and coat shelf.
From our CAD class, samples of student work.
From a member of our junior class, Nathan Richen Dollar, an autographed copy of his book.
Oh, I'm jealous now.
Very nice.
All right, I'll get all of those.
From our pre-voc woodworking, a maple cut board. From machine shop, a meat tenderizer mallet.
I don't think so.
From our marketing program, we have two items of school spirit wear.
Holy Talina, this is better than Christmas!
From the art department, a beautiful candor holder shadow box. On behalf of Roseville High School, we'd like to thank you for all of your support of our student body.
And now, we would like to present Ms. Michaela McCann, and she's gonna sing.
It's midnight. (singing) I heard that you've settled down, that you've found a girl and you're married now. I heard that your dreams came true. Guess she gave you things I didn't give to you. Very nervous. Thank you. Old friend, why are you so shy? Ain't like you to hold back or hide from the light. I'd hate to turn up out of the blue uninvited, but I couldn't stay away, I couldn't fight it. I'd hoped you'd see my face and that you'd be reminded that for me, it isn't over. Never mind, I'll find someone like you. I wish nothing but the best for you too. Don't forget me, I beg. I remember you said, sometimes it lasts in love, but sometimes it hurts instead. Yeah.
Mr. Switnowski, on behalf of Roseville High School, we thank you for all you do and all that the board does to support this kind of talent in person and in gift and in oratory from our students. We owe you all a debt of gratitude, and thank you for being our representative on the board this evening.
I don't believe the great gifts and the song. I mean, this is what we're all here for. You know, as Teresa said, all of us are, you know, born and raised here. We've had children go through the school. You know, my wife, you know, this year, we're gonna be celebrating 29 years of marriage and three kids through the Roseville schools. As I always have said, and I'm probably one of the better or the most vocal cheerleaders of this district, put us up against anybody. And once again, thank you. It's an honor doing what I do here every day, and this makes it even better. Thank you.
I'm the principal at Roseville Middle School. On behalf of Roseville Middle School, I first would like to thank all of you for the work that you do. We are...none of us working in the best of times here in Michigan. We have some tough tasks ahead of us, and I want to thank all of you for the work that you're doing. Mr. Franciscone, I'm glad, I just told you, I'm glad it's not a competition. We had some...we had our arts and tech department work on some stuff for you. Tonight, I have Donna Robinson here, and she's gonna pass the baton here, but I'd like her to introduce herself, and then we're gonna...we've got some gifts for you. I wanted to get you a lot of gifts, so I went to the high school to get some, and they were all out.
Mr. Franciscone, before we get started, on behalf of the Roseville Middle School bands, we have some representatives from the band, and I'd like to first have them introduce themselves.
I'm Samantha Avery, and I play the clarinet.
My name is Samantha Potberry, and I'm a percussionist.
My name's Miranda Rumfalle, and I play the flute and piccolo.
And on behalf of the Roseville Middle School band, we would like to make you an honorary member. We're going to give you a baton, so whenever you want to lead, come on up, you just bring that. And we have a shirt for you, and you can wear it to events like Bandorama. You're welcome to wear it there and, you know, show your school colors and spirit. But...and then if you ever want to come and play an instrument, you just, you know, give us a call. Or if you want to come sing in the choir, you're welcome to come over and sing in the choir. And then the art department made you a sign saying, "Thank you for all that you do for us." And then if you would...let's have you introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Brooke Kirk. I'm Miss Lamonting, and kids that worked on this, just a thank you for...we think...
And now, we're making you an honorary Wildcat. So you are now an honorary Wildcat, Mr. Franciscone. So we just want to say thank you so much for all that you do.
I'd like to thank you very much. And by the way, I just want you to know the name Franciscone, I think I was in the third or fourth grade before I finally got to spell it. He took a big card, took up half of the room and said, "You're gonna learn to spell it before..." Mrs. Starling. She said, "You're gonna learn to spell it before you get out of this school." So I had to learn to spell it. And another thing is, talk about music. When I was in elementary, I'm gonna play the drums. So I got a...bought a pair of drumsticks, got the money, went alley picking for bottles and cans, got the money. Got the drumsticks, he said, "We're out of drums." I said, "Oh, great." So then I said, "Well, okay, now I'm gonna...I wanna play the violin." So I went and I saved the money, and I bought the rosin for the violin. We're out of violin, so I figured, this is a sign, so I never did play. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
My name is Chuck Felker. I'm the principal at Dort Elementary School. I have three staff members trying to hide behind the screen over there. There's Ms. Teresa Tamala, Ms. Darlene Stevens, and Ms. B. Haxer. They're here tonight to help me with our presentation for Ms. Janaye. Our students and staff put together a little video. You'll probably recognize the tune, but listen to the words more than the show that it represents. And you'll see...you'll see just what Ms. Janaye means to us. She...her child went to our school, Mr. Janaye, who does our videography here and is gonna take care of our technical stuff real quick. But she is an avid supporter of Dort Elementary, as well as all the board, but she never misses an event. She shows up for our concerts, our after-school activities, all of those types of things. You can just tell that, besides being on the board, she generally enjoys being involved with our school and talking to the staff and the kids and just being involved in everything. So it's a wonderful thing. You ready to go?
I got it, I got it, I got it.
One more time. (singing) Thank you for being a friend. Traveled down the road and back again. Your heart is true, you're a pal and a confidant. I'm not ashamed to say. I hope it always will stay this way. My hat is off, won't you stand up and take a bow? And if you threw a party, invited everyone you knew, well, you would see the biggest gift would be for me, and the card attached would say, "Thank you for being a friend." Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a friend. If it's a car you like, I'd surely buy you a Cadillac. Whatever you need, any time of the day or night. I'm not ashamed to say. I hope it always will stay this way. My hat is off, won't you stand up and take a bow? And when people get older, with walking gains and hair gray, have no fear, even though it's hard to hear, I will stand real close and say, "Thank you for being a friend." Thank you for being a friend. 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 Let me tell you about a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a friend. And when we die and float away into the night, the Milky Way, you'll give me time as we ascend. I'll say your name then once again. Thank you for being a... (singing) Thank you for being a friend. 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 People, let me tell you about a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Whoa, tell you about a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a friend. Woo!
In addition to the video and all the well wishes, we do have a copy of the card that was in there for you, but we have a gift. At this point, I'm gonna hand the mic over to Ms. Tamala so that she can explain some what went into the gift, once Ms. Janaye opens it up.
Let's see how good you do that. Anyway.
Many people donated to this t-shirt quilt for you. But as you see, it represents Roseville of the past and the present as well.
Oh, is that beautiful?
Let us see.
Teacher might be Joey.
I don't want to take up a lot of time this evening, you know, telling you who contributed to the quilt, but I did include a list for you, and all these cards from students at Dort. That'll keep you busy.
Dort has our hearing impaired program, and being on the ISD board with our special needs children, I like to go over and see our hearing impaired programs in the school. And Teresa does a great job with them, as well as the rest of the staff over there with them. Thank you, it's just overwhelming. The kids is what it's all about. It's really what you're here for. Thank you.
I'm Lori Kint. I'm principal at Kaiser Elementary. Mrs. Bathurst is a second-grade teacher at Kaiser, and she and I have brought some very special Kaiser students who are going to help us to thank Mr. McCartney. We are very thankful for the many wonderful things and opportunities we have at Kaiser for our students, and we certainly appreciate our school board, especially Mr. McCartney, for all the things that they do to make our jobs easier and make the children have some great things at Kaiser. So, Mrs. Bathurst?
Thank you again for what you do for us. We're not only honoring you, but we're trying to Americanize it as well. So we came up with a song to a holiday tune, I think, that I recognize once we get it done. So, is everybody ready?
(singing) Thank you for all you do, for buying us the many things. We couldn't do it without you, so we want to say we appreciate you. Oh, Mr. McCartney, you are one of the best. Giving us a chance to learn to read, do math, and all the rest.
Of course, you're all going to Hollywood.
We have a special little prize for you members of us at Kaiser. There's goodies inside as well.
All right, I was gonna suggest that Kevin cheer, but not I'm actually cheering. Thank you very much, guys. All nice, all right. Oh, and a cup? Thank you. Nice work, kids. Excellent. Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McCartney.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it. And of course, as Kevin said, and the others before me, this is why we're here. Good job, let's thank you.
My name is Fay Buchi. I'm the principal at Patton Elementary, and I'm very proud to present some of my kindergartners, Ms. Kamorowski as a teacher, Ms. Lissinger, and Ms. Klopowski. And I will do the honors of celebrating. Mrs. Green, we love you, and I'm gonna let the kids take it away.
I have to stand 'cause I can't see.
Stand on your shoulders. I don't know if you have some brain books?
I have to stand, I can't see. It's too high, this thing.
It's mic.
Microphone. Thank you, I didn't know we had one. Thank you, okay, we'll do that again, sorry.
Thank you for our running buses. Thank you for our wonderful teachers and our principals. Thank you, Mrs...wait. Thank you, Mrs. Green, for our new playground. Thank you...thank you for Ms...Mrs. Green, thank you for the new cafeteria. Mrs. Green, thank you for our computers. Thank you for keeping our building safe. Don't keep keeping our rugs clean. Thank you, Mrs. Green, for... Thank you. Thank you for...everything works.
Everything works.
Thank you for... Thank you for music, library, art.
Mrs. Green found Mrs... Thank you, Mrs. Green, for everything.
I'm gonna sing later on.
I'd like to say thank you to you guys, you made my days in my old age. I ran around for a while. I'd say probably about 40 years rookie in school, volunteering, then I ended up on the board, and I love it. I'm getting kinda old, though, so it's about time for me to take rockin' care of it. But you made my days really bright, so thank you. Thank you so much.
Evening, I'm Dan Schultz, principal here on Park. This is Ms. Cuffold, as the music teacher has set this thing up, so she's gonna start the kids, and then she's gonna continue. Ms. Cuffold?
(singing) Boys and girls in silver and gray. I love to come to this happy place. Why are we singing life and love and pain?
Ready, nice and long.
Let's put one thumb up, two thumbs up, and do something. I can do it, I can do it, I can do it. Hold my heart and mine, do it, I can do it. I can wear my shoes, read my books, sing to the head through. I can write my name, write my numbers, there's lots of things that I can do. I can do it, I can do it. I can do it, I can do it, I can do it. I hold my heart and mine, do it, I can do it. I can do it, I can do it, I can do it, I can do it. All right, I can do it, I can do it. Sing it for us. I can do it, I can do it, I can do it. I hold my heart and mine, do it, I can do it.
It's the biggest one.
Oh, there you go.
Ms. Cuffold will introduce what she has here.
Hi, Mr. Scott. So we have kindergartners, first graders, and special ed kindergartners. So, Mrs. Castiglione's kindergarten, raise your hand. Great. Yeah. Mrs. Hitch's kindergarten, raise your hand. Very good. Thanks for coming. And then we have Mrs. Burkulis's kindergarten. Excellent. And then we have first graders. Mrs. Gamaric's first graders. And Mrs. Co... Co... Kazerek. Kazerek's first graders. All right. So I see all of these students once a week for music, and they love this song. So Mr. Schultz walked down the hall one day and said, "Hey, come here, come here. You gotta hear this song." So he loved this song, and so we sang it. But we chose this for you because technically, not I can do it, but we couldn't do it without the help of the school board. So that's why we chose this song. Even though they love the song, we can't do it without you. So we thank you. And on top of all your medical issues, our last song is just a nice little message from them to you. And all of you, thank you very much. Ready? Say it's a rock song. Sing it, bring it. Big breath. Nice and long. Do it again. Nice and long. There the kids.
Thank you. Who brought you tonight?
Uh, mommy. Lori.
Your name's Lu Pachu.
Mommy. Mommy, mommy.
What's mommy's name? Can you say mommy's name is? Or daddy, or grandpa, or sick cousin, or neighbor? What's your mom's name?
Mom.
Well, thanks, Mama.
My dad, and my mom, and my papa, and my dad, papa, and grandma. Mom. It's on the same thing 'cause we're brothers. Yes. Mom. Mom brought us. Yep.
Oh, we brought the same parents 'cause we're brothers.
Daddy. Uh... My mama. My mom. My grandma. My daddy, and my cousin. My auntie. My mommy. My dad. My mommy. My mom. My mom. My mom and my dad. My mom and my daddy. My mom and my dad. My mom. My mom and my dad. My mom. Mama.
It's kinda hard to believe that me and Mr. Schultz were that... at this size at one time, I know. Yeah, you lost all the weight. I was in hospital at Christmas. It's hard, but I got a lot of cards from the kids, and it meant a lot to me. So, thanks again.
Well, Mr. DeFaleese, we're here to say thank you to you and all the board members, but we get to focus on you. So tonight, Mrs. Lupo and her first grade class is here to do something special for you. But tonight, we wanna make you an honorary fountain falcon. So tonight, you're for the birds. All right? So the falcon is the strongest bird with the best vision. So we appreciate you. And tonight, these little ones have a special treat for you. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Lupo.
You don't need to sit down. He's short enough.
Stand up.
Firing squad.
Thank you for all that you do. You make us feel so special and very lucky. We're glad that you are here. We couldn't do without you, that's the truth. And so instead of that, we appreciate you. Thank you for all that you do. You make us feel special and very lucky. We're glad that you are here. We couldn't do without you, that's the truth. And so instead of that, we appreciate you.
Oh, boy, look at this. Hi, babe.
Ooh, look at this.
This is how you maintain this beautiful figure.
This beautiful figure.
Here, we'll hold it.
Here, we'll hold it, Joey. Do it here.
Sure, right over here.
Just go easy on the pie. It's one size fits all. Well, when you have to make those tough decisions that are coming up with the state not supporting our teachers with our budget cuts and everything that's going on, I love this night because this is why we're here. It's these little ones that you guys help us give them a future. And keep that in those dark days and those hard times. Remember these kids, and that we all appreciate you guys and the tough choices you have to make. Okay? I just would like to thank all you kids for taking the time out tonight to come and give me all these goodies. And I'm gonna enjoy them. And I thank all the parents for participating in our district. It means a lot to us, and I enjoy helping all the kids in the district also. And thank you to all the staff and teachers and principals. And my wife. I can't forget my wife. See her with my Joey. There they are over there. Thank you for coming. Okay, everybody, have a safe drive home. Thanks again.
Just too many to do. Thank you, Michelle.
We're gonna take a break right now, 'cause we know you folks wanna get with your kids. This little one in the front slept through the whole thing. He's... That's pretty good. Thank you, parents, for coming and supporting us. We love the kids, and have a safe trip home. Thank you.